Get started. With the approval of minutes from March eighteenth, both regular and non-public.
I move approval as presented.
Who says? Second?
Oh, second.
All right, is there discussion or?
I only catch it. Well-written, very well done. I have one small note. Line three fifty-six. Three thirty-six? I may go wrong. Excuse me. Yeah, three fifty-six. It says, Mr. Tracy.
I'll break this.
Yeah, I totally about that knew who she meant.
Well, I knew she meant. I just thought, you know, I just wanted to point out that I read. As usual, excellently done. Very thoughtful.
Would you have made your motion for as amended?
I move we accept the.
Oh, yeah, I'll say. Yeah, I'll update to as amended.
Okay. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was for both, so just for clarity, the non-public minutes will become public.
Do you take a separate voting?
Well, we can, but she said both.
Yeah, and I think.
You said both, right?
And that's totally fine.
And they are, I agree.
I mean, anytime we can have them be public, I think it's safe.
I think there's anything in here?
No.
No.
I don't think we need.
I would have made a motion to see the law.
Russell.
We're good.
Okay. Board reports. Who else?
Um, so Eva has not met since our last meeting, but I did meet with the Heritage Commission that. Yeah, sorry. And they graciously agreed to move their meeting time to five-thirty, so I can do that. Even though I was like flying in the door at five-thirty-two, I think it's all gonna work. They had met with the master plan task force at the meeting that I wasn't at, and that went well. But I think there's more brainstorming been done, so they might like request another audience or something. I don't know if that's done, but I'm sure.
I talked to Madeline. She's, yeah, she's, she and I are working on that.
Okay, well, let's see how it, I think. Cool, so, um, yeah, that's really basically it, except that they are also looking for more members. So we might put that in like the sometimes those things about in the newsletter. Committees are looking for members. That's all I got.
Any questions for us? I'm glad they're, I suppose, and that went well. Anything productive? Okay?
Uh, nothing to report because conservation doesn't meet until Thursday. The only update I would give you is that I did ask they could be be provided some information on right-to-know laws, since they're having a little bit of a struggle understanding that.
Who's next?
The Energy Committee met and Ed fortunately attended. We had, because we had a very good presentation from a company named Funroch, who introduced us to solar-powered streetlights. And were you gonna mention that in your notes at all? Okay, well, it was a very good presentation. They're a leading marketer and manufacturer of solar-powered streetlights, which are potentially approaching a point where they could be affordable. Liberty Utilities actually has one in a yard they have in southern New Hampshire, where they didn't want to do trenching. So it's obviously something that if you have to do trenching, it works out to be an economical opportunity. So it's something for us to keep an eye on. And Ed will keep an eye on a couple of projects ongoing and possibilities there. And we'll see how it goes. It could be great. That's all I have from Energy.
Uh, and the, I'll report the Planning Board met, and it was largely a hot grant zoning rewrite discussion. No hearings this time. So any questions for anybody about, uh, committee reports? All right, we will move along. Town managers' reports.
Hey, thank you. For staffing report, no changes. We still have one police officer position that's open. As we stated last time, we do not plan to fill that till closer to June when the academy's starting. So we'll continue looking, but we have no plans on on hiring anybody right now unless a certified officer.
Did I see the the new man in uniform this week?
Yes, he's.
Terrific.
Doing training.
Yeah, yeah, I knew he was gonna train here before he goes to the academy and didn't know if they'd put him in a uniform, which they obviously have, and that's terrific.
Yep, he's well into his FTO now.
That's great.
Things are going well from what I hear. Um, with that, we are also looking at postponing the police assistant position. We're nearing the end of the school year, so we're still taking applications if someone great walks through the door, but we're not pushing as hard as we were before. Whitney Hall Public Safety Building. Final work for this lab in Whitney Hall should be completed this week. We do have some weather coming, so we'll see what happens with that. But everything looks like we're still gonna be able to possibly get that done this week. And then we have a plan of starting carpentry work next week. Last week, crews did finish supporting the back wall in the theater area where we found the the fire and some of the burnt studs. So they they assisted those studs for the civil or the structural engineer. And they're gonna be doing a few more structural upgrades and inside putting some steel beams and things in places so we can have the spans that we wanna have. But with that, overall, the Whitney Hall project's moving along well. Public Safety Building, not a lot has changed. Their RFPs are out on the streets still. They should be due. I think some of them were due last week and some are due this week. But we'll be, we'll be looking at what that looks like for final budget numbers moving forward. Still have a, still have a goal of breaking ground in May. Looking forward to get those numbers finalized. As a public safety in general, Enfield was ranked the fifth safest town in New Hampshire. So if you remember, last year we were the fourth safest town, and the year before that we were the seventh. So we're, we're staying in that top ten. We did drop down one slot. Can't tell you exactly why, but I'm betting having two officers down had some role to play in that.
That's so funny, cuz I was just bragging about being number four on Sunday.
Once we find out our number five is, we can take care of that.
So with that, an update on the Mascoma Lakeside Park project that you guys approved last year. We have received an approved shoreland permit for that, and the RFPs are out on the street. They'll be due, I wanna say next week, I believe, but before your next meeting, I believe those will be due. And we'll be getting contractors on board to do the parking lot and trail project this summer. Funds depend. But we do have a grant for that that needs to be completed before September of this year. So we will be spending those bonds to get at least the parking lot section done. That'll be an exciting project this summer. Um, Shed Street, you guys haven't seen it. The final building has been removed. They've been doing a little bit of cleanup around the the yard there. But Criteri, our environmental contractors, did ask that we stop the final grading for now. DES has required them to do some more water testing and some soil samples throughout the lot before we start moving dirt around. So put a hold on that and we'll see what the what the final tests come back as. Also, in talking with them, I've reached out to the State Bureau of Trails to discuss removal of the railroad ties and the creosote. I guess, the, the dirt in the, some of the dirt tested positive for creosote needs to be removed. So I've reached out to the Bureau of Trails of the state to see if they, what they'll do to help make that happen.
Is that normal for them to ask for soil testing again?
I believe so. Once you stop, stop, they'll, they'll do some testing. There may be some ongoing monitoring wells for a while on that property.
I hope they hold themselves the same high standard.
Well, BEES is the one asking us to get them off there, so I wrote DOT and said the state's requiring us to moonraise.
They're yours, my friends.
Slight update on the RRB lights by EBS. We did hear back from the state. They wanted a couple minor tweaks to the plan. I think we've got past most of the big hurdles, but it looks like we're getting closer to getting that finally approved. So hopefully we'll get that turned around back to them pretty soon and see what they say next.
Did they stick to their requirement of asking for additional lighting?
I think we got past that. They asked for, it's a few small things with the way the signage is around the posts and different stuff. Some smaller little stuff.
Is it their own signage?
No, it's signs that we have to put up with the lights.
Okay, well, I don't know. I've never seen someone make a project go so long and be so expensive for nothing. It could just be paint. I'm sorry. I'm kind of over this. But it's not safe. I don't, I don't wanna like jest about that. I think it's really unsafe. And it's ridiculous that they're willing to endanger children so they can have their squabble dog moment.
On their street.
Yeah, on their own street. Ridiculous.
So a little bit of the master plan update. Master Planning Task Force and Planning Board will hold two community forums for the purpose of taking comments. The forums will be held Thursday, May ninth, from six to eight P M., and Saturday, May eleventh, from ten to two P M. Both forums will be held at the Enfield Community Building. DPW update. We did get notified that Governor of Council approved the hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar grant for the purchase of the new snowplow. We got word today that we can go ahead and move forward with that project, so DPW will be putting that order together. Again, I wanted to thank Jeremy Clay and Jim Taylor for their work on that grant.
How much was that again?
Hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars towards a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar drug.
It's a big deal.
Yeah. Really good grant. I did wanna let you guys know, I know we talked about it a lot last year, the congressional direct spending. We had put in for some things on the building projects. We were getting ready to put in for those building projects again. In a webinar that me and the chief attended, we have learned that as of now, they have not yet awarded last year's grants. With the building moving forward, we decided, and with some other federal regulations, we decided we were not gonna put in for those building grants again, cuz we couldn't delay the projects that long to do it. So we, we did some brainstorming. We worked with Jim Taylor, and we ended up putting in for water infrastructure improvement projects, and we put in a grant totaling two-point-seven million dollars. Some of it was the nineteen-oh-three pipe replacement, which is about one-point-seven million dollars. And then we put in money to develop and connect the marshwell, well sites that we've found and put a pump out sand, which is about a million dollars. So we put them in together, knowing that if they come back, we can separate those out some if they wanna give us a smaller amount of money. So we'll continue to stream like that, but we talked about it so much last year going through. I wanted to make sure to update you guys that we kinda made the shift at the last moment, where we think it's a good project to put in for.
Will they fund backup power at the marshwell site?
Not now, cuz we didn't put in for it, but there's a possibility that we could put in for something like that in the future.
Only if we're offsetting things we have to do anyways, I feel like we could probably figure it out. This would be a big deal for our water users.
Yeah.
Be incredible.
Thought this, I told Jim today that even over the next couple of years, if we don't get this one, this may be something that we can streamline a little bit more and put in for. It's a, it's a great grant project that can save a lot of money. The towns will be talked about a little bit tonight, but the town's twenty-twenty-three application to the Tree City program was approved. The town has participated in this program since two thousand nine. The highway crew, you may have noticed this on some of the streets, has been spreading three-quarter-inch hard pack in some of the potholes and washboard areas. Right now is not the greatest time to be upgrading, but they wanted to get out and do a little bit to help the roads as we're moving into our second month season.
It wouldn't be a terrible thing to drop a clue at Dartmouth's ear that they really should give us a couple of loads of gravel for Shaker Boulevard.
Now, we'll be.
Do they have a permit to travel over without?
Yeah, they're gonna be working to fix our road.
I was gonna say, because they need special permission.
No, there's no reason to do it right now, but they should be participating in spring cleanup of that road.
Yeah, we've already been.
Give them the traffic.
Did we make them issue some kind of bond to travel over it when that was posted?
I don't think.
I'm asking if Hanover makes you do that. You can't even drop a house.
No, but we had an agreement in place.
Okay, okay. They would be used to it, because Hanover won't let you do anything.
Yeah, no, we've been working with them, and the road will be nice when we're done.
It's definitely that, too.
First quarter water meter readings are complete. The bills will go out next week or so. Wanted to really highlight that the readings took only two days, which is a new town record. That the radio installation project is doing well, and it's eighty percent complete at this time. So as we continue to finish that, things will be a little bit smoother even. And so two days to read all the meters is really nice. And along with that, the annual consumer competence report that the Water District puts out is on the town website. If people wanna look that up and you can see what their water's like. And then that DPW is just preparing for the storm predicted this week. And then one last thing, the town clerk. She'll, she'll be closing the office tomorrow at four o'clock instead of her normal seven o'clock time. She has some personal things to tend to, and Daisy's on vacation. And that's my report.
He said website. Do we know when we're at new website and if we get anywhere? I know it's, I know it's not a small project. I'm not.
It's really close. We're doing the fine-tune back and forth stuff right now, so it's really close. We're just, every time it comes over, we're like, can you change this? And then it's.
Each of the assessors' website have been down for a few days. The, there's an inability to log into the G I S map portion. I did it in a backwards way and got there, but you can't go through the town of Enfield website to get there.
I was on G I S like half an hour ago.
Through the town site?
Yeah, on my phone, cuz I looked at the sale.
You may need to refresh your page.
Oh, I've done.
If you have a problem and you don't refresh.
I had to go through Access, and so I do it at backdoor.
Yeah, I got, I know, just because I happen to be looking at the sale, I'm asking about.
We get a lot of that, that, hey, your page isn't updated. Refresh your page and then refresh, and it comes up different. And it'll keep coming up in your page wrong sometimes. So, but if it keeps it up, I mean, now I'm looking to it.
Other questions for Ed? Thank you. Next up, Arbor Day proclamation.
Housing?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, housing is first, isn't it? I think we've got our housing folks just walked in. Would you guys like to join us up at the table rather than sitting back?
People can hear you better.
Perfect kind.
Good to see you.
So since we, many of us don't know each other, we can do a quick little introduction. I'm Eric Russell.
And Alice Kendry.
Tracy Young.
Kate Stewart.
And then you know Ed.
And Norris.
Probably know Rob.
Yes.
And just let us know who you are, and Ed, you can kick it off if you want.
Okay, yeah, I'll let them introduce themselves in just a minute. It'll be a short introduction. I was talking with Clay Adams here, and we've talked on and off about housing a little bit over the past couple of years. And with us having a few properties coming up that we're gonna be discussing possible housing on, and I know the zoning rewrite's going on. I asked Clay to bring some people here from the corporate council just to discuss housing in the Upper Valley and just help us understand a little bit more what's going on, so I'll share it over to you.
So maybe I'll lead off, but could I first ask my colleagues to introduce themselves?
Dave? Sure, I'm Dave Duncan. I'm Dartmouth Health's VP of Facilities.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carolyn Isbell, and I'm the VP of Town Acquisition and Career Development for Dartmouth Health as well.
I'm Stacy Dameron. I'm the Senior Manager for People and Organization at the One Risk U S Bad and Production in Lebanon.
And the One Risk has how many people in Lebanon?
Right around three-hundred-and-sixty.
And DH in the Upper Valley is?
Um, probably ten thousand in the Upper Valley.
And so I'm Clay Adams. I'm President of Masoma Bank, two-fifteen Albonquin. My wife and I have a seasonal camp here in Enfield after a number of years now. So the Corporate Council, as Ed referenced, is a group that's a program within vital communities. It's been around since two thousand and six, and it's about two dozen different members, mostly of the larger employers in the Upper Valley. We meet every couple of months. And I was chairing it for the past six years until this year and handed the reins over to somebody else. And one of the things a number of years ago, we found ourselves talking about considerably was housing and really stemming from the inability of, of employers to find employees. And so over that time, there have been a number of things that we've done. One is a number of the employers funded a position to focus on housing and bring attention to it and really just keep the conversation going. A number of us have been in front of a number of different municipalities, some multiple times over the years, often to give the employer perspective of what it is that they were facing. Often it's to advocate for zoning that will allow housing to be developed. We also created something called the Upper Valley Loan Fund, where eight employers contributed ten million dollars to a housing fund that's being administered by EverNorth, which is a regional housing provider, Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont. And there, there's a very modest return for that investment from the employers. And in lieu, in exchange for that, the the dollars go into housing projects in the Upper Valley that are focused on keeping housing available to those who are earning between sixty and eighty percent of average median income, which in Grafton County, at least a couple of years ago, when we did the feasibility study, was fifteen to twenty-five bucks an hour. And the idea is not to earmark those for the employer employees. It's just to create more housing. Because if you're a practitioner at DH, you wanna have a restaurant you can go to and have a server. And so this is, housing has become such an acute issue in the region nationally, but in particular in the Upper Valley, that those who are raising families here and want their kids to come back and live in the Upper Valley and own a home can't. Those who are moving here, whether you're a nursing student trying to look for a home or whether you're a doc who's a hire, homes don't exist. And I'm involved in this largely as a, as a person who runs a bank, not to make more mortgages, but because every, every business customer we talk to is saying the same thing. Whether it's the hospital or the coffee shop down the street from my office in Lebanon, they wanna hire more servers at Lucky's, but they can't, people can't find housing. And so to me, it creates the vibrancy of the economic, of the Upper Valley is at risk because it really, human capital and the people who work for employers, whether it's municipality, whether it's a coffee shop, whether it's a medical system, are really what keep the economy going. There, I'll, I'll just pause. I want to say one more thing that we've done as the Corporate Council, working with the Lake Sunaby RPC. We started quantifying the number of new homes that are being built each year. And so we looked at not all sixty-nine towns in the vital community service area, but really those that are contributing Enfield being among those, which is one of the larger population towns. And we quantify the number of new homes that were built each year. And between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and nineteen, the average was two-hundred-and-thirty-seven new homes for the entire region. And what were, we did see more in twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. I think it went from like four-fifty to six-hundred being built, most of those apartments, most of those in Lebanon. And so I think that's at least what what we have done as a court of counsel, as businesses that are encouraging home building, or, and we're not talking about single necessarily one type or another. We're just trying to raise the issue that we are having a hard time hiring and growing as businesses to serve the communities that we're, we're here to serve. So that's kind of the backstory, but I might ask Carolyn and Dave if they could bring the kind of the DH perspective to it. And we're gonna get T-shirts made up of all the municipal meetings we've been to.
I think you should start by saying our vacancies, how many people we hire, how many people have to turn over, and what some of the great things we did is help recruiting, and it's all related to housing.
Definitely. So when I think about the health system, we have eight different member locations and hospitals from Alice Pack Day and New London Hospital to the Minion Academic Medical Center. And I think in total, we have about fourteen thousand employees, and that includes our hospital down in Cheshire and areas too. And across the health system, we right now, today, have just over two thousand job openings. And I'm sure that every single one of you that has experienced healthcare in the last few years has encountered some kind of wait or delay or something that you just wish could have went a little bit smoother. And on our end, we're trying our darnedest every single day to find ways to do this without having the staff we need to actually be able to do the work that everybody in our community needs us to do. And it's not for lack of trying on a lot of days. One of the things that we consistently hear from our workforce is housing and childcare. They're the number one and number two barriers, and it is both access, kind of availability of inventory, and then the affordability of what's actually out there. So I think in Lebanon alone, and I just, I've looked at those numbers recently, there were four houses for sale. And if you looked at just the last real estate reports, there was one house under four-hundred-thousand dollars in Lebanon and one, I think, in Enfield. So when you think about the, like, the people in all of our communities that are trying to find a way to permanently stay in our community and our workforce, it's, it's almost impossible. I know over the last few years, there's been a tremendous amount of building and development done in apartments and bringing kind of those, those properties online. And I know a couple of years ago, we actually saw a lot of our new grad nurses, who are we, who we are completely reliant on as almost our single source of talent for nurses, where they were accepting job offers with us, looking for housing, and then withdrawing their acceptance. They have one of the most portable credentials. You can go anywhere if you're a registered nurse in this country. And if you can't choose to to work in our community, then you're also not, if you can't live here, then you can't work here. And then all of us kind of suffer from that. So there's a lot of, a lot of work that's been done in the apartment space, and we've actually put in place a couple of different housing programs where we're able to master lease apartments to then sublease to those that are kind of relocating to join our workforce. And while that meets kind of the immediate need for the here and then now, the challenge is, is that so many of our people that want to stay, and they get to that two, three, four-year mark of work, and they're looking around and they're trying to find a home to buy, and there's nothing available to them, so they start looking outside of our communities, outside of our organizations, and they leave us. And what that does on the flip side then is leave us with less experience in all of our facilities. More need to continue to recruit, continue to try to bring people here, only to have them not stay. So it's like this self-perpetuating cycle.
Can you say what's our average pay? Cuz I think people think in the hospital, everybody makes a lot of money.
Yes, so there's everyone from, there's a whole kind of spectrum of roles. I often think that you, it's like running a small city inside of the hospital, cuz there's so many facilities that we need to maintain and upkeep. We have all of our allied health technicians, registered nurses, our L N As, all the way to our providers and specialists. And so, but when I think about the majority of our workforce, most people are making somewhere between probably sixty-five and a hundred thousand dollars. So it is not that everyone's earning kind of the physician salaries, but the majority of of people are really in that, in that space.
And so if you take ten thousand employees and eighty-five or ninety percent of those nine thousand people making in that range, and you gotta, you gotta spend two thousand dollars a month on an apartment and play pay electricity, et cetera. It's pretty quick. After two or three years, man, I spent a lot of money on my apartment. I've graduated. I'm an MRI tech. I'm a nurse. I'm a surgical tech. I'm a respiratory therapist. But I can't, I can't live here. I'm making pretty good money, so our, we've done a lot of work on apartments and master leasing apartments, and it's part of our recruiting tool. And Carolyn is, and I've worked closely with Carolyn on how do we get more apartments and how we master lease and how do we try to provide them. But we've been two years that every nurse that we accepted the job has come to work. They've not said, I can't come because I can't find an apartment or the finances don't work. So we know housing is making a big difference or being able to help someone find an apartment. But again. But again, two or three years, if they don't have a place to buy and get a mortgage, so I'm not paying rent. I'm like, I gotta go find another place. So our 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 request or be able to answer questions is um please do everything you can to be able to modify zoning, change things that would allow additional um housing to be done, and either apartments or homes. Um, and I can tell you, so I've been here just shy of four years and I relocated up here. And um my wife and I, we lived um in an apartment, uh and we were looking around. Um, and we loved Enfield and kept on coming back to Enfield and we're looking, we could not find a place that um that we could could buy around here. So we ended up, ended up buying in Lebanon. So um that we're here to answer any other questions where you can, yeah.
And I don't, do you wanna introduce what Nova, who Nova Nordisk is too, for those who may.
Yeah, um so uh Nova Nordisk were probably most well-known at this point, Crozempic and Wegovy. Uh, the facility we have here in West Lebanon, we manufacture biologics for um patients with rare diseases. So um typically underserved folks, and we work um with patients with hemophilia and growth disorders. So the majority of our um, the majority of our patients are actually um youth, uh which is uh fairly inspiring work to be a part of. Um, similar to to what's just been described um for the hospital, we have uh the the same challenges. Um, I just got an updated report today that said twenty-two percent of our offers declined in Q1 were due to uh not being able to find housing. Um, so they they weren't accepting offers or saying they did accept an offer and then uh inevitably backed out um due to the challenge with finding somewhere short for them to stay. Um, like Dartmouth, we've engaged in holding master leases as well um for rentals for folks. Um, but that doesn't, that helps our people coming in. Um, but one of the areas that um we employ largely, and we've worked a lot with our job description so that we can engage and hire locally, um is that we were um hiring a lot of really great early talent, early career um folks. And um within, you know, three to five years, they're, they're making um decent salaries, you know, sixty-five to eighty grand as an operator in manufacturing. Um, but they're having trouble moving out of uh either apartments. Um, we've had two people who were looking to move out of their parents' homes and they weren't able to find anything in this area, and so they ended up moving out of the area. Um, so essentially, we trained a workforce and and sent them uh to to larger businesses um in other areas. Um, so really similar, our whole goal is to to have a sort of a sustainable ecosystem here in the Upper Valley, and that really starts with housing. Um, and I'm just getting along with relocating some of our talent. Um, we're really engaged with developing talent within the community, working with the local schools and building that pipeline here so that our families and our kids um can continue to enjoy the space that that we all sitting in this room and employ really, really love. Um, and that's getting harder and harder to do. Um, so that's, that's why I'm here and and kind of curious as to, you know, what are your questions? And um, you know, what are some of the the things that are on the table to start um solving the challenges we have as a community?
I think one more interesting point is Carolyn uh surveys a lot of our new employees and our employees that are in our apartments. And um a lot of developers come to us and say, we wanna convert a warehouse to an apartment or a mill, et cetera. And they wanna build studios. Our employees, they graduate, they don't want a studio, they're good for three or four or five months, and they go, that's the same as my dorm room, my college. I wanna invite my parents up and cook them a dinner, I'm a professional, I'm working here, and I can't have a table. Um, I wanna have my boyfriend come over or my girlfriend, and and the studio doesn't work. So we try to encourage the people that are gonna build, 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 try, don't build a a studio. They want a one-bedroom, they wanna be able to spot where they can put their bike um or their skis. Um, but more importantly, so I wanna cook dinner and have my family up and show. Um, this, this is what I'm doing. Making a salary now, but I can't do that in a studio.
And just a couple other data points that I think might put a point on it. Um, I referenced working with the uh Regional Planning Commission. So they did a study in twenty-twenty called the uh Keys to the Valley. And that study showed that the Upper Valley will require ten thousand more units by twenty-thirty. And if we were building two hundred and thirty-seven a year, we're not getting there very fast. Um, and um uh another point I'll say is New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority does a housing study every year. Last year, that study showed that uh a two-bedroom apartment in in Grafton County um increased over five years by eighty-three percent, and that was the fastest in the entire state. So um when I look at, Mascoma has a presence in Portland and in Burlington. When I go to visit those places, they have something we don't have here. And that is developers who can build at scale, whether that's homes, townhouses, condos, apartments. We, those all have to kind of come in here. There's some incredible builders locally, don't get me wrong. But they're not those that are putting up fifty homes a year or two hundred apartment units. And so that's a little bit of a headwind we have. But I think um municipalities around us taking the step of kind of creating accommodating spending will allow those to come in knowing that they can put up units at at in whatever fits for that municipality. So we're happy to answer questions or share perspective.
Since you're in Portland and Burlington, and I know a little bit about both of those areas, what do you see is the difference between those areas and here as far as attracting developers are concerned?
I think a lot of, in those places, those developers are already there. And I think that's the big difference. I talked to somebody, um I referenced the fifty homes and two hundred apartments, and this was in the Burlington area. And it's a developer who had been working in basically one parcel in Williston for a number of years. And that they had, they had purchased that parcel and they were, it was working within that zoning and putting up those units. They can do it at scale, so they can bring in framers and like do it, and it's not a one-off spec house. And um if Buff McLaurie, who was a real estate person in the Upper Valley for decades and family were here, he would say, what we used to have in the eighties and nineties where people, um I'll say that, you know, smaller builders putting up spec homes. And that took up a lot of the need, or it addressed a lot of the need, those people don't really exist. As as a bank, the only spec homes, we we don't see spec homes. Really the only single-family homes we do, if it's not a DIY, are people who have, money's not the, not an object. And they can, and either they're paying, or they're paying cash for a home in a place.
So is Earl Simpson when you need him?
Exactly, yeah, Earl put up a ton of stuff.
Yes, he did.
But we have folks here who self-fund to do spec homes. And the problem is, no one's gonna go to a Mascoma Bank or another local bank because they know they're getting denied, right? You're not getting money for a spec home, no one loans to that scale. For a small ranch right now, those are running in the four hundred thousand dollar range to put up, based on prices, my family's.
They don't pencil out.
No, of course they don't, and because you're, it's an immediate loss, it's automatically not worth as much as you paid to put it up because of the pricing. So I think we're talking about a self-perpetuating issue, right? Um, but on the flip side, I think the hospital is largely guilty of causing some of the self-perpetuating issue because you bring in the travel nurses and the local tenants, right? And you pay them, say, three times sometimes what you're paying the locals. And so they're coming in looking at, and that elevates the price of a rental or what someone could pay for a house. I'm watching people keep their house here, do the same thing, so you you buy a house in Enfield. Um, and it's maybe a price that's a little bit much, but you go away and you take your 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 Dartmouth job and your resume, and you go away, you get three times as much, and then you take two months off. And then you go somewhere else that's fun, and you get another three times as much. So now that house is sitting empty because you need a place to come home to, right? So that's another problem, and that's created by the hospital. It's, it's a very specific problem, and it's not a single, single issue. Um, I'm, I'm watching a house right now, um I've watched multiples, and I think it's very, very hard because it, it's a seesaw, right? You fix one home, it causes another, so these houses are sitting empty. They don't wanna rent her in there because when they're finished, their three months or the six-month commitment, they wanna come home. Because this is the place they wanted to be. So some of it is a question of why are we funding one version of supplementing income or supplementing housing and not funding the actual workers so that they are incentivized to stay here and pay that money into here? I think you're, you know, you're looking at, maybe you guys need to be looking at a holding company. I mean, we can only fix so much with zoning. If you guys had a holding company and you were doing the development and you were backing it financially.
We are doing that.
We are doing, I know, I know that you have some.
Master leasing hundreds of apartments.
But master lease is very different than building a single-family home, which is what people.
I also don't know that it's fair to pin it on Dartmouth. Because they're, they're hiring nurses to take care of the community.
Oh, no, I don't think it's, it's a self-perpetuating, it's just, it keeps going like this, right? And they're the biggest employer, and so we're constantly competing. If they're paying thirty-five hundred bucks to for a master lease for like, say, a one-bed with a small um and and helping supplement, that's great. That, there are a lot of folks here who automatically raise their rents around us. And it makes it so the seven, when, and I think it was great that Dartmouth raised their lowest wage holders, right? Those folks immediately fell in a donut hole where they didn't get services. So they suffered from that, and now they can't afford their apartment either. And so it's really, I don't, I think it's very, very complicated.
I'll just maybe, yes.
I, I missed it, but, um, I hate to interrupt folks, but this is really intended to be sort of a big picture.
Yeah.
What can a town do, not a discussion of individual employers, not a discussion of um sort of, you know, specifics of any particular case. We know there's a huge housing problem. This is really an opportunity for us to get an employer's perspective. And I'd like to really stay focused on that rather than sort of the details of why we're in the situation we're in. We're here, we know that, there's limited things the towns can do.
Yeah.
So let's focus on the things that perhaps you've seen be successful in other towns that we might not have seen. And I'll also say, we also have a number of member, members of our planning board have been able to attend tonight, which is really great. Um, so I want them to feel like they can ask as many questions as they want as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you certainly can.
Um, so we, the accessory is for the planning and other people who know these things.
ADUs.
The ADU.
Accessory dwelling.
Change that we made, has that done anything? How, is it been like a year, two years? When was that?
It's, it was a year ago that we approved the second ADU as a, as a byway for all uh single-family homes in Enfield. Uh, so you can have either two attached to your house, so basically a three-unit house, or you can have a single detached and an attached. So we're, we're, we think we're getting creative a little bit here. I know the state is actually considering the same kind of legislation to allow this in all um towns. We'll see where that goes. But of course, that, I mean, you could probably speak to this, Clay, is it's really hard for people that, you know, own their house or or paying on their house to be able to afford to add the ADUs, which is good housing.
It, it's very similar to what you said about building a home, you can't, they don't pencil out. Like by the time you build it, you can't cover it with rent. And so people are choosing not economically to do it. You see, someone may build an in-law suite for their in-laws, that's more than a financial thing. So we're just seeing very, very few people seek financing for those things, just for those, that economics.
I can just real quick uh give you a couple of the things, just to update you guys. So hopefully you can kind of go back to other places and say, well, this is what Enfield's doing. Cause we are, we are, we feel like we're really pulling our load here. I mean, I know we've heard, we've, we've been to meetings with Lebanon, they're like, what are you guys doing? And so we had, we did the the double ADU. We did get a grant from the New Hampshire Housing uh called the New Hampshire HOP, which is the Housing Opportunities. Uh, we're actually redoing our zoning ordinance with housing in mind, and we've got a great contractor helping us, actually two contractors. So uh that's in process, it's ongoing, we've got planning board members here, Eric's on the planning board. And that's really exciting because we're really thinking about, you know, what, what can we do to sort of get out of the way a little bit to try to help foster some additional units of housing? Um, so that's a big one.
We've already reduced our zoning.
We did double our density in the R1 zone. Um, another thing that I would throw out there that we've done in the last ten or fifteen years as we've expanded our municipal sewer and water, which is what the developers really want. You really don't see a lot of people coming in, do a hundred units on private septic. It's gotta be on municipal sewer. And we do own a significant capacity at Lebanon's treatment plant.
You are highly unusual in that compared to any municipality.
Yep, so we've got, we've got some stuff in process right now. But it is, it's the struggle, and you guys probably talked about this. The struggle is, we want it to stay rural and want that sort of character that we've had, that we all enjoy, and we love the green space and all that.
Yeah.
On one side, but we really do need some more people. So it's kind of this clashing of sort of cultures. Um, but I think, you know, I mean, people are starting to realize, and our ma- we just did a master plan, that's something I'm really proud, proud of. We're actually working on phase two of our master plan. And, you know, our, our master plan said, we really, we, we gotta have more housing. We need more types of housing, diversity. Uh, and you know, I mean, it's just self-sustainability for our schools, our enrollment is kind of doing this continuously. Uh, we have a, we have a development proposed right now that's going through zoning for three hundred plus units. Um, but it's not without controversy, there's a lot of opposition, people are scared, it's, you know, it's big. Nothing like what we've ever seen in Enfield before. So there's, you know, there's a lot to think about, a lot of moving parts there. But uh like I said, I'm proud of what Enfield's doing, we're very proactive, and we're not burying our head in sand as some other communities are, to be perfectly frank with you. And that's what I was hoping when we talked, is you, you gotta get in front of those communities and say, oh, what are you doing?
You know, I moved out of London because I was so unhappy.
Sounds like you guys are doing great.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of good things you're doing, the density you cut in half.
But we need money that can be a sunk, like it's gonna just, you know what I mean? You almost need a chunk of change that you say goodbye to. I know, like, and I'm not picking it up, you can't write it off, right? Some, a private company can write it off. So unless you have a chunk of change that you can throw at the problem and write it off to reduce your tax liability or something. It's not, you know, nobody just goes away, goes out giving away money for a house that you spent four hundred thousand on that's immediately gonna be worth three hundred. I mean, how often do you, you can buy a house here for, say, three or four hundred thousand and put three or four hundred thousand dollars of work into it, and it will still be worth four or five hundred thousand.
So if I could give you, give you one quarter, cause you're doing all great, um is the way to have an affordable, single-family home today is, it's not stick-built, it needs to be manufactured-built. Um, and the, and the quality is second to none, Carolyn and I went and saw a factory. Um, and the price point is where you're gonna bring it uh affordable. Um, and the ones that we're honing in on, cause we're looking at at doing that, and the town Lebanon modified their zoning in two different areas, um to give it a shot, a real dense area, um manufactured home. But it's called a cross-mod, where it comes in a couple of pieces. But the, the front porch and the two-car garage is stick-built, and it all has to be code. Um, and in very, very high quality in the car, and that's how you're gonna get to the two hundred fifty thousand dollar, um three hundred thousand dollar home if you have water and sewer. Right, and you're gonna do a scale at ten, twenty, thirty at a time. So you're doing some great things. Um, I'm surprised some of the dwellings haven't taken off, but if they're not penc- penciling out, then it just doesn't work.
You have to have cash up front and, I mean, you get to a certain point.
It affects me, I don't have the money to build three hundred three dollars.
I mean, I think, so I'm from a family that I, we grew up buying and selling and renovating homes. And you get to a certain point where you're like, this beautiful colonial could have two more apartments, say, on the third story, throw in a mini split, and nobody dies from getting like, you know, overheated in the attic in the summer. And it could be beautiful, right? But there's, by the time you run, you're mechanical, just the mechanical is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in some of these homes.
That's, mechanical is what's killing people.
It is, it is the mechanical, and absolutely everyone deserves to get paid. So then how can you turn around and you're like, okay, this is really an apartment geared for a workforce housing type, right? And you're like, oh, BTW, that's gonna be like three grand. There's no way, it doesn't. So it is just an on and on, and I, it's not a picking, it's how do we solve this? I don't, I don't have the answer because I've been painting apartments lying on the floor on Saturday mornings for free for my family because the best way, way to get through over the hump, right? It's to put some free family capital into it in a lot of these cases. But that's not a long-term solution to getting developers in here.
So there are other?
Yeah.
Things that you guys have seen that might be working in other buses?
Is, my, my question is, would your employees be looking more at the townhouse model as opposed to the large compartment model?
I think.
You know, almost, you know, when I say the townhouse model, four, four units.
Like across the street from Georgia, across the street from Georgia, that town.
No, no.
No, he's renting those.
A townhouse would be an individually owned, but it'd be, it's like a condo that you own personally.
There's a fire line.
They're typically not.
More like, more like, like you.
I think what our employees are looking for is, they're renting for a few years, I gotta get a mortgage, I can't be throwing this much. So they'll, they'll do anything, condo, townhouse, home, that they can get a mortgage and begin to build some equity. You know, a, a two thousand dollar a month apartment is, you know, a lot of money every year. And you do three years of throwing out or, you know, spending twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year on rent. And you go, I gotta do something different, I can't stay here, so.
And, and right now in the Upper Valley, you can't, you can't build workforce housing. And, and right now in the Upper Valley, you can't, you can't build workforce housing. It's a big, you cannot build, you know, you can't build for three hundred and forty thousand. You're like, you've got to get something that's manufactured housing. Um, because of the cost of land piece. Is also with, you know, it's not the, it's not just that. It's land is expensive in the Upper Valley.
Yeah. So if you have the land. And you guys are proactive, it might be something. That if you get the right developer, is that an investment that the town wants to do is I wanna donate this land so. Forty houses can go in there.
We're seeing towns do that.
And, and, and then the penciling might work, but now you've got. Good residents here. They got a place to stay. The stool, school starts going back up. Some of the towns are doing it for their own employees.
Yes.
Um, police, fire and school. Teachers, cuz all of a sudden, if you eliminate the cost of the land and you do do a manufactured home, it gets closer to penc- penciling. Most specifically if you have municipal water and sewer.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Well, these, uh, select board is gonna be talking maybe later in this meeting even. We've got some town-owned property that is gonna be. Put on the market at some time really soon. So we will definitely be considering that, that these guys will be talking about that.
But why I invited you tonight?
Yes.
There's smaller chunks of land, but it's something for us to be thinking about as we're.
Are, are there solutions you've seen other towns implement that were effective and had the results they wanted?
Or what I'm seeing across the country is the only way to make it work is to have it manufactured. Like the cost of the home is thirty percent of the stick.
I hear that, but that's what the private developer would do. I'm talking from a municipal side. Is there something, like, we can't tell people how to build. Whatever they build, they'll make that decision for themselves. What can we do as a municipality that might?
We're seeing in the area, it's early days for that, but we're definitely seeing municipalities. Take, I'll say, more agency in this and wanna create, be the developer. And try to bring in a partner with a private developer on town land to build something or put on as Dave is saying. And I've, you know, I know a local bank that would say, we, we will help the municipality who's also a customer as Enfield is. Come up with a mortgage program and if you're earmarking those for your municipal employees or teachers or like that's, that's. I don't know if that is um a finished blueprint yet, but I would encourage you to talk to. To McNamara or Sean Mulholland about it.
We have private landowners in this town that have parcels because they're over ten acres.
Yeah.
Have placed the land in conserved use. And if they take it out of conserved use and sell it, then there's an obligation for them to pay back, if you will, back taxes. Are you finding that in other places or is there a way around that?
I haven't seen that. It's a good question though. There's a lot of those parks.
The, the penalty though, right now where the market is so high, the penalty really isn't a barrier in the same way it used to be. I think, um, you know, I just did a quick napkin scan of my, I have a lot of suffering currently with some farm. Um, and it just is really, before it might have stopped someone. I think right now, by the time you finish selling, you know, you do the subdivision and everything, I think it will. Easily work out for most people, but if the market drops back down.
It's more of an IRS thing than a state thing.
Well.
Yes, the state would be.
The state is um DRA, right? There's DRA, so it's the state.
Yeah, I can see from a policy perspective, the state being more accommodating.
Is there anybody who provides like initiatives or grant funding to do some of this workforce housing that's. I'm gonna say principal forgiveness because that's where we have the most success telling people like, hey, we have this great program. It's principal forgiveness. Because if you tell people here, it's a loan and we already have quite a few loans as a town, right? So we're already in that. I would say we're, you know, at deck to equity. We probably need to be mindful of taking on another project. Um. Is there anything out there that you've seen?
I, I'm not familiar. I would, I think Eden Drew Winter from Twin Pines would be a person to could talk to about that.
I think he would be more working with developers.
Developers, yeah, I just.
Funding stacks and tax.
Yeah, most of the projects that like at Twin Pines is doing, there's one right across the river from State Line or Russian Listen. The loan fund has, that, that we created has two million dollars into that one. Um, and there's not any public debt in that. That is a, that is a EverNorth Twin Pines project with a ca- a very flexible capital stack. That is creating housing, beautiful.
Who was the owner of that property before?
Uh, it was privately owned and it was purchased by Twin Pines.
So Twin Pines bought the property from the private landowner?
Yes, I believe so. It was being built by, as I understand, DEW.
Yeah, DEW is doing the project.
Yeah, and another girl to develop.
Yeah. I think something that you can do is at least politically. Keep pushing the fact that we need housing, we need workforce housing, we need just regular housing. And one of the big items is. Is the infrastructure cost to put in the roads, the water, the sewer. And uh I would think the need is so big, at some point, there's gotta be some federal grant or states. Um, sponsored that would help with that. Most specifically, if a town was gonna um. Put the land up front, um, how, how do I get some help in putting the utility infrastructure in? Which then keeps the numbers um lower. So I just think. You know, how can the state and the federal government help at some point? Those are some of the big numbers.
And that's what I was just, two weeks ago, I was in Washington as part of a banking trip and we do visits together and that is exactly one of the points I make to them is like, we need. More infrastructure for this very reason, so that whether it's sewer, water, and um utilities.
So Dartmouth is looking at um taking a chunk of our land um that has water and, and sewer close to it. And how do we develop it for workforce housing? Um, and if we take out the dollar value of um the land. And we're looking at the manufactured homes and we're trying to do something at a, at a very reasonable price so that our. Eighty percent people can afford it. And uh our gap is the cost to put in the road, the roads, the water, the um sewer. Sprinkler. So we're looking at opportunities, federal and state, how can we fill that gap and then we could make that work. So just. That's, that's a, uh, that's a challenge because it's expensive.
So that's an interesting one because, you know, you're talking about, you talked earlier about how you train somebody and you did it as well and then they leave. So you build a house, you do all that work, right? And you get all the infrastructure and then it sells outside of your organization unless you do a model where you. Have to sell it back in. I'm thinking specifically of like Harvest Hill. You can't sell it outside, right? Once somebody, the folks at Harvest Hill behind APD, those ha- those houses don't get sold out to the general public. There are. Are rules and I don't know all of them, but is there a way?
Yeah, there's ways to do that. We're looking that um. We sell the home, we eliminate, um, I hope there's no realtors here, eliminate all the real estate costs. We eliminate all the profits. Building it and then as part of the sale, we have first right of refusal to purchase it back.
The college did all of that on top of.
Years.
And Hanover, so they haven't done it for a number of years and they certainly have the property where they could do it again, but they haven't. Expressed an interest in developing housing.
They're getting there. I think the new administration is um taking steps to get back on track.
They have all of that land north of, uh, that was cleaned up.
Yes.
Up by Krell and it's ready to go again.
It's not cleaned up. There's not been one.
It's not cleaned up yet.
To try to stay focused on Enfield. Are there any questions from the planning board I want to ask specifically? Any more of those?
Um, I just got a couple of comments really, um. I mean, you talked about the not doing spec homes anymore and. I mean, the way homes are selling, I would think they would have no problem selling it. So, but the other issue that I also see is that, well, one for the town, there's a very limited amount of. Town-only land that is vacant that could be built on and it's usually acquired through back taxes. Um, so it's a very slow process for the towns to even acquire a parcel of lands. Um, now the, I know Dartmouth and I believe his, um, the college owns large parcels of land. Now they might just be sitting on it for whatever reason, because they don't have to pay a lot of tax on it. Uh, so, but it's vacant land. And, you know, and then you talked about, you know, needing employees that need housing and you're losing the jobs. But I don't really see a lot of employee-built housing, like the old, um, the old school, excuse me, mills. They built the house, they owned the house. The mill worker lived there, paid rent to the mill. I mean, it was just, that was the, the model, but they needed workers coming from outside the area, usually overseas. Back then, um, but they slowly provided the housing for their workers. And it was probably heavily subsidized depending on the mill. Um, and then the other comment is. Upper Valley is just a desirable place to live. It's sort of like those. Um, places in Colorado, ski areas, you know, the big ski areas. Everybody wants to live there, which of course. Makes it desirable, so you can charge for, for what you want, if you own something there, driving up prices. And the employees of the Upper Valley have expanded over the last twenty, thirty years. Just the number of employees, businesses, the expansion of the actual business, I mean, it's gone. I mean, I, I worked there for almost thirty years and we tied it out and I watched it build on, just. Added on to the structure and then they just recently built it themselves. Well, that's requires more employees. So we just, and it sort of became a, if you build it, they will come. Well, they're trying to come, but. It's no place for, like you're saying, you have to stay here too. I mean, come and look, yeah, love to live here, love to work here, but. Um, and then the, the other bottom line is on the, the land, someone has to be willing to sell the parcel to build it. And I've been looking at the real estate pages for the last, oh, over the course of the winter, just sort of. Placing at them, just curious what's going on. There's very little vacant land being sold. So if someone's owns the land is unwilling to sell it for whatever reason. I mean, that's their choice. They don't have to sell. They can't force themselves. Um, it's all a stock. Unless you use your own property that you already own yourself. So, I mean, just something to think about.
Thank you. Um, does anyone online have questions or comments? This would be. Sharon, I think I saw your hand up. Yeah, go ahead, Sharon. Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm Sharon Bofe. I live in Enfield, have for about twenty-seven years. Um, I really appreciate this group of people who have come to talk to the select board. Um, I think what's opened my eyes um is the. The point that you are making that the people who want to come and, and have houses don't want apartments. They don't want, I mean, an apartment is short-term, yes. It can solve a problem for a little while. But what I see is they're gonna leave to have a house someplace. Um, and maybe they want a townhouse, perhaps. It depends on how the townhouse is built. If it's, uh, you know, eight townhouses all smushed together in a big building, they may not appreciate that as much as a townhouse. It's built where they have a little bit of a yard um to enjoy the outdoors. Um, you know, we can all imagine that. So I think it's just a really good awareness for the select board. It's in the master plan for Enfield that we want workforce housing and we want housing for seniors. I've said time and time again, I have a house that could probably have three, it has a house and an apartment. It could have another apartment probably in it. That's three dwelling units for somebody, but there's no place for us to go that's smaller and affordable and for senior housing. Um, that's a whole nother topic for another day. Um, I think the one thing I'll, I'll share. Is that, um, and I'm gonna end in just a second. I spoke to the developer. Uh, is developed, is hoping to develop Laramie Farms in Enfield. And the three hundred units that were mentioned, and I asked him about workforce housing and senior housing. And he said, the problem is that's just not affordable for him. Um, you know, I said, couldn't even maybe twenty percent of, you know, if you're gonna have three hundred u- units. Can't twenty percent of that be workforce housing? Um, so I would just encourage the select board, even though they feel like they can't. Um, set limits on developers. I did hear the people who presented say that more towns are doing that. Um, you know, I think maybe it's time to step out a little bit and. And, uh, you know, it's easy to sit back and let the developer come and do what they want because then they're gonna build big fancy houses. That people can come and live here, but they're not the workforce here. They're gonna probably do a little bit of what um Kate had said, of live here part of the time, you know? And have maybe houses in other places and not really become part of this community. So, um, I just really appreciate this conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. You didn't make me do one more question. For the revolving fund that was created, does that have any mechanisms that? I mean, people come and talk to Rob mostly when we talk about stuff for the mix, for having some incentives for mixing. Um, you know, market rate with other rates.
Yeah, there are projects, yes, and it would just have to be on a pro-rata basis for the number of units that are there. Um, so yes, that, that is an accommodation that they're making and it's administered by EverNorth. The companies, uh, you know, Mascoma and Dartmouth Health who made those investments don't have any say in that. We just wrote the check.
We do have RSA, was it seventy-nine E in place where we have the ability as a board to um rebate some of the taxes incrementally and we. Probably need to get it so that we have a bit of a formula.
Yeah.
Um, to do it, but we could be incentivizing it on the tax side so that it does the first year's taxes. Because if they didn't build, you wouldn't get any of the taxes. That's the, the premise, right? It's not you're giving money away. It's that you wouldn't have gotten it in the first place. So we do have the ability to do that.
Well, I was gonna comment on that. That's how a lot of the towns are doing. The, I guess, demand for market housing or for lower increases. You know, they're putting some skin in the game too with, with tax incentives and different things to make the numbers work.
You can also do it on the density side. You can say if you're gonna put in twenty units of workforce housing. Will let you put in forty extra units in total.
That's like a bonus.
That's the bonus and that's how you get workforce housing. You could do the same thing with senior housing. The thing with senior housing is by building senior housing, you may get the houses they're coming out of. On the market.
Yes.
And they're larger houses. I mean, yeah, so now Shangri-La Road, those Victorians. If, if, you know, those people moved into, well, this is grown with did that. She built a place right behind hers and sold her big farmhouse. You can start getting families into houses like that and it puts more housing in the market. Cause that's, the key is putting more houses into the market. It's not the price. Why the price is so high is because there's no houses in the market. And people are coming in with cash. So young families who wanna get a mortgage, they can get, they can get the mortgage, but they can't get it that fast.
That's right.
Because people are coming in with cash.
And both houses are selling with no contingencies.
Right.
For cash.
Yeah.
So the mortgage never enters.
And that's one of the big problems of the Upper Valley right now.
Another thing I'd like to throw out there, you were talking about the finance stack. We have this regulatory stack too, so you have overlapping regulations from all these different layers of government. The thing that really is frustrating us here is the state of New Hampshire specifically. We have major roads in our town that are state of New Hampshire DOT control. And we've had, we've had a development come, actually was really a good lead and we thought maybe we were on the right road. And they've kind of pulled out because of state of New Hampshire sort of. I'll call it inflexibility or even more like delay tactics, I think, probably a little bit more. The DOT doesn't really have this sort of motivation that we all have at this table to try to get things done. They're just kind of like, eh, we'll get to you, you know, we'll, we'll talk later. And we're sort of sitting here like, how are we gonna do this?
That's what theirs was. It was. The numbers are gonna work, everything's gonna work. It's gonna take us too long to get permitting and it's not.
I can talk to the governor. He, I'm, I'm dead serious. That would, I think that kind of thing makes them angry.
It, it quickly though turns into a problem because they're like, well, you can't, you know, there's a bend in the road and there's a dip and we're like. Did you notice we're in New Hampshire? You know, we all know there's a bend in the road.
There's a dip and a bend.
It's like, it's unbelievable and they want all of this sightline and I'm like, this isn't SimCity, kids. We are building in a place that we live and we love living here because it's beautiful, because it has dips and valleys and bends and lakes and rivers. So.
That's one thing you guys could do for us is to help with the other layers of government to kind of, cause I mean, I think there's. State legislation pending to say to planning and zoning, you have to, you have to give them a decision. You know, you got forty-five days to make your mind up and so we're sort of under the gun like, we got it. Then it's like the state, well, well, can you give us driveway permit?
How about that crosswalk that's been over two years? The crosswalk in front of the elementary. The crosswalk in front of the elementary school where the kids are patently unsafe on a state road and they will not take care of it. They have been dragging out for two years.
That's our emblematic one. We just want the flashing crosswalk signs. It's been in permitting for.
Which we bought and they're sitting in the warehouse.
So, so anything that can be done to encourage the state to make timely decisions?
Use your help.
Would be, would be.
We have to make a decision within ninety days. So day eighty-nine, they ask for more information, which gives them another ninety days. And that's what they're known for.
Really appreciate you guys coming.
I think we're in the same boat together. It's just how do we solve the.
If I have any optimism, it's that every sphere of society is talking about these very things. Municipal, nonprofit businesses, we're all, like you were saying, trying to find the best path forward and it's not an easy.
No, and I, yes, thank you for inviting me today. But I'm also, part of, part of my journey right now is really learning what is going on in the community. Like I've, I've taken some quick conversations with Clay about, you know, financing and how this all works. And what I've realized from a lot of the folks that I'm, I work with and talk with is they're, they're actually ambitious enough and capable to, to do a lot of this on their own. But having to go to the town and figure out what is your process and then having to go to the bank and figure out what is your process. And then all of these different pieces, you know, I need a project manager, I need all these things. If there was a way to, to put together information and this really, you know, consistent, easy package to say, here's how you do it.
I talk about the flow chart all the time. I want a flow chart.
And, and we do, you know, working in pharmaceutical manufacturing, there's a lot of really big technical terms that I don't understand. I'm not a scientist. I have a business background. But we, we use different programs to like transition that language into like, I forget what we call it, but basically it's like real speak. And I think Dartmouth does something really similar as well. So that people can come in and easily understand how to operate a piece of equipment and, you know, grow its cells and purify out this intentional protein using mixed resin and like all these fun things. But I, I, I think the process is complex and it wasn't like that twenty years ago, forty years ago, you know, when my parents were building a house. So I think if we were able to organize it in a way and, and show people.
Someone to build her a mansion.
I did build my own house. I was a project manager. So I learned a lot in that process, but again, it, it was, I mean, it, it took a while to figure out how to navigate town and all my vendors and all those different things.
I'll just say to that too, so I know the project that Dave shared a little bit about, one of our major goals is trying to create a repeatable model. So it's like there's a roadmap for how, and you know, really starting to bring manufactured housing into the state of New Hampshire in a greater, in a greater way, just to bring some visibility and to say, okay, look, this was one way to do it, to bring some scale, to add some homes. And, you know, yes, it takes a lot of different factors all coming together around it, but that's the only way that we're gonna get, get it done. So that's again, like I said, we need housing for our workforce, but we also, a big goal of ours is creating that process map.
As I said, that was one thing I was gonna say, and that's something we can work on in the, in the zoning rules and stuff is, you know, I know Lebanon's working high, but some of the, the pre approvals and another thing we can do is, you know, decrease building permits and those things for the pre-approved houses that'll go on lots to make the process really easy and seamless.
David, in fact, we, as many of you know, live in a right after Civil War, old farmhouse that required some repairs on a, what you now call an ADU, used to be called a mother-in-law. And this past year, and, you know, it went about as smoothly as it possibly could with the, with the permitting through the town and a little bit of financing and, and the construction. But it's doubtful that even if we charge, you know, close to the top of the market, that we will get ROI during our few remaining years.
Okay. I'd like to tell you just, it's great to hear the conversation you guys.
We're like, we want houses, we just don't know how to get them.
Thank you for that, Chris. For being part of the solution.
Thank you very much for coming.
But I think if you guys come up with something along the way that you see as a great model, if you send it to our team, we're very open to making this work.
And even, even things like, I mean, certainly the town doesn't advocate for any particular thing, but if there are clear resources, like if a homeowner has, is in David's situation and is renovating something, if there's resources that they should be pointed to that would be helpful to them, you know, the town can make resources available.
Like if you guys had a toolkit of some kind as an organization, we could be probably linking to that toolkit where it, right? There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. I'll talk to the, the, the people who run the housing program of vital communities. That's the type of thing that they could.
They're fabulous too.
They could put together Ellen and John, who could help create those resources. Yeah, thank you.
My solution in life is to send everyone to Rob. I'm like, oh, you wanna talk to Rob?
Thank you very much.
I do this all the time. I can't answer that for you, but Rob can.
No, we can, we can educate people on resources available. Be great if there was something.
I just sent every single news to somebody recently.
Yeah, that was good. There's a lot, a lot to think about there. But we will move on to Arbor Day.
John's not here to read it.
He's not. So as we do every year, we have our Arbor Day proclamation with someone here. Is there any other introduction necessary?
No, we have a motion and the proclamation. I went back and forth on which one to do first, but I think it makes more sense to do the motion. To actually make Arbor Day Arbor Day for us and then read the full proclamation.
Okay.
Or it says, read the full proclamation and we're going, yeah, we just read the whole.
Read the motion first.
Would you like to read it?
Sure. I move that we proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four as Arbor Day in the town of Enfield.
You could probably read the proclamation.
Yeah, read the proclamation.
Two twenty-four Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Damascus, Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, Catherine D. P. Stewart, Eric Russell, John W. Klug, Alice Kennedy and Tracy Young, Select Board of Enfield, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four as Arbor Day in the town of Enfield, New Hampshire. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to celebrate efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this day, one April, two thousand twenty-four.
All in favor? Close? Have Arbor Day twenty twenty-four. Well read. Thank you, Tracy.
Is this one of yours?
I have one in here.
You have one there?
Okay. Johnston Drive, Lot Six, discussion.
So if I put in your packet, I talked to the town's attorney about the Pharaoh's letter, which I'm calling it first right to refusal, but it's actually a needed first option to purchase. In talking to him, the difference is, well, that's kind of what I'm explaining. Difference is that they have an option to purchase it, not an odd, a first right of refusal is, you know, you get an offer for a little piece of land or something and they have the option to meet that price. So what the attorney said is we should be working with them to get a appraisal that's fair. A market value appraisal and then they should get the opportunity to buy it at that, that price. So, long story short, we just talked about putting forward an RFP for that and he recommended not doing that. If it works with them, we get an appraisal if they would like to purchase that and then sell it to them at that appraised.
Have they written a notarized letter yet, as is referred to? It refers to they're writing a notarized letter to us.
We haven't offered to them at all.
Yeah, we, we first technically say we're going, we're, we're offering it availability. Okay, and then they write the letter.
Or so to say, yes, we will buy it. But in that time, we're gonna need to get an appraisal because they need to know how much.
Sure.
So should we?
I just wanted to bring that forward for discussion. There's a few ways we can go about this.
We put the, the, cause we had a motion, put an RFP out. So do we need to put the motion back on the table for discussion? I didn't know if we.
Yeah, I think it was to authorize it, but we don't have, he doesn't have to release it until.
No, that's fine. I didn't.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
I just didn't know procedurally if we were okay.
Do you want a motion for us to make it available?
Question about how we want it.
I think the real question is how do we do, right, the path is clear. We get an appraisal, we determine fair market value. They have the option to purchase it at that value if they say yes.
Once we agree to the appraisals.
I mean, I think you have them get the appraisal and we agree. That way they're, they're paying the fee.
Thanks.
No, no, so. So the question is, how do you get the appraisal? How do you get the appraisal? One option is have them do it and just take the value they say, but that's not going to necessarily be in the town's best interest. The other option is the town gets one and they accept it. The third is we both get them. Now they can make their decision on their side. The question is, what is the town going to do for our appraisal?
Also have our appraiser come up with something first.
Right.
And go talk with them and they could get one and then.
Go from there.
By that, you're saying.
Yeah, if they're way different, then maybe we.
And we have a point of negotiation.
We're not talking formal then, are we talking norm when you say our appraiser or are we talking this? So, I mean, I would be in favor of doing that because I really feel like you could agree if you needed a formal one, you could agree together to save yourself from having two sets of fees because we're saying we're gonna have them bear all.
I, I would like to see an appraisal from a licensed real estate agent in addition to Norm for us.
Well, it'd be, it needs to be an appraisal, not a real estate agent.
Real estate agents don't do appraisals.
Well, I understand.
They can give you a.
But I would like to see it from a licensed appraiser in addition to Norm. Cause I think he's great, but I'd also like to see someone who perhaps has a little more current familiarity with the current market.
What if we were to say with Norm's, our appraiser, Norm, who everybody knows, has given, this is his opinion on the value. Knowing that this is an opinion, would you be interested in going forward and pursuing an appraisal with a great appraiser? Would we do it that way? So that they know like, cause if we came back with like five hundred thousand dollars, they might be like, whoa, no thanks. And if we came back really low, it might be different. I don't, I think it's a piece of lakefront. It's valuable no matter what.
New.
We can get them to come, review and come back with something.
I think what we need though is we need a clear, essentially, not like a fancy report, but something that says, here's the methodology, here's the analysis and here's the result. That is very easy for, you know, just about anybody to read and understand. And it needs to have those three things. It needs to have the methodology and as, needs to have the actual, you know, appraisal. Here's the comps, here's how we did this analysis, whatever, whatever the analysis is. And then here's the result. I tend to agree that the, the best way to do it would be to have one of the appraisers in the area hired to do it. And I, I guess my concern, if we, if we just had Norm do it and then we talk to them, the appraisal could come in totally different. I think it's better to do it once. From the town side of like, you know, this is the number. And I don't know what appraisals cost these days at all.
Just a couple hundred bucks. They're not that expensive.
I mean, but I think, I think it's worth us just do it, do it right, right from the start, get the appraisal.
Which we can add to the price anyway.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, right. I mean, and then that'd be part of the purchase agreement would be the appraisal. And if they agreed to it and they needed an appraisal, we can presumably, if they paid for the appraisal in arrears, have access to it as their appraisal.
So I wonder, could we, could they agree upon an appraiser upfront? Is that, there's not that many appraisers available.
I can work with it. We can find.
Okay, because it's, the timeline on getting an appraisal isn't always that great around here right now.
No, but I.
I don't think we need to bind ourselves to their agreement to the appraiser upfront.
We don't have to.
No, I think.
If you wanna speak to them about an appraiser suggestion and see if they agree to that, that's fine. With no commitment that that will be the only appraiser involved.
I'll talk to them that way and leave them the yes or in a position.
Yeah.
Do you guys remember the last time we tried to get an appraiser?
And, and it is, I think it's important for the appraiser to be working for the town of Enfield.
No, that's the point.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying like, even if it's agreed upon, they're working for the town of Enfield, in the best interest of the town of Enfield, not anything else.
I don't think any of you guys were on the board last time we tried to get an appraiser. We never got one. I want, I wanna be very realistic with you. We could not get an appraiser to do the Shed Street, not the Shed Street, the Depot Street property because there weren't comps and no one was willing to do it. And I'm not saying this is the case, but it's a, it's a little bit of a weirdo parcel with the railroad and we are, we know we had the weirdo one with the other railroads. So it would be interesting to see who will be willing to do it.
Yeah. When we reach that point, we can cross that bridge and get there.
That we went back and used arms.
That's correct.
Yeah, on, on getting appraisal, would the appraiser also be taking into consideration the purchaser's access?
They would take everything about the entire property into account with developing the appraisal. That's exactly what they do.
The, the value of the property will be, be based on its access as well as the land itself.
That's exactly what the appraisal, we're hiring them to do.
Yeah, because my understanding access is either a rail trail, the water from lakefront, you know, coming in on a boat. Or you go down Johnson Drive, across town, then the rail trail or across remainder of the town.
That's not our problem.
It's not our issue to, as Kate says, it's not our issue to decide the access. They, they can land a helicopter on it for all I care.
So that's exactly why you hire an appraiser.
Yeah, and what about a survey then?
We don't need.
Not at this time. And if they require one as part of the sale, that should become their obligation to pay for it.
Surveys aren't required to do sales.
It's one, well.
No, I, I bought plenty of stuff over my life.
Yeah, but you're buying, this is being a subdivision though.
No, it's not a subdivision, it's a separate parcel. It's already.
No, it's always been a separate parcel.
I know, you don't think this, but everybody else thinks this.
Yeah, I know.
The attorney said it was.
And either way, we're gonna go step by step. Step one is get an appraisal. Step two is offer it to them for purchase. If they choose to purchase it, quite frankly, though, any survey issues do become their, their issue.
If they decide not to buy it, they can also buy it.
Right, they can still put a bid on it.
They can still put a bid on it.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, it might come in and then nobody wants, they don't wanna buy it and everybody is low and.
Once we have the number, if they choose not to buy it, we have an RFP that's ready to go.
Right, exactly.
You're right. You can only do it one step at a time. This is the step we're doing.
Okay, do you have what you need?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, so we will move on to strategic planning. And we got our red line copies this time, so we've all paired. As I went through it, there were two, a lot of it was, you know, clarifications and sort of typical, you know, word smithing type edits. The two, well, one, John had put in on page five, last paragraph. He asked if that paragraph is needed. Are there opinions on that? I'm fine either way. I'm fine either way.
I didn't have a strong feeling.
I'm I'm fine either way. I don't, it it's partially redundant, I know, but I I have no issue with it.
I I felt there were some things that were repetitive throughout. Anytime you can make it a little more brief, I think. You know, if anybody knows anything about strategic planning, they should also know that. They're not permanent, but or does it become a little block note that Halas eyes shoved somewhere or footnote? I I don't think it belongs in the main interaction necessarily.
Do you have any fingerprints on that? So so Kate, you you, I mean, John's obviously suggesting, based on his uh, is wondering if this paragraph is needed. Uh, let it be removed. I'm I'm comfortable either way. Do you think we should?
I'm fine either way. We 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 phased the developer to write that paragraph. Yeah, I'm fine keeping it as well.
Yeah, and and it is important to remember, this is a dynamic document that will be reviewed regularly.
Yeah, every year. Did you cross it up because we're?
I did because Kate Kate and John both felt that.
No, that's fine.
Repetitive and could be removed.
What was your opinion?
My opinion is agnostic.
I thought you were an atheist, but okay.
On this, I'm agnostic. It's fine either way.
I mean, it's equivalent of hitting someone with a hammer.
We're eliminating the paragraph.
You can hit him with a hammer if you want.
Yes, so so it was, you know, the two people who had strong opinions felt that she would remove.
The last paragraph.
The last paragraph of that footage of that, yes.
To the strategic plan documents and define strategies by identifying the direction the town plans to go.
And then there's one that I do have an opinion on. On page seven, um, I entered in uh, a new bullet. Um, uh, balances long term and short term costs and the value that expenditures and investments provide to citizens. Uh, that is not, so this is sort of taking a section from the master plan. This is a bullet not in the master plan, but one which I felt. Was suitable for this list. It was my feeling.
I think it's a really good one, Eric, and I wasn't sure how to word it myself, and when you did it, I was very happy, so.
The only thing I would recommend, I think, is that we put some sort of explanation that this was added and not part of the master plan. Because it makes it read like it's.
Yeah, that's that was my one, I think it's the right place, but I think.
Footnote?
I think we could.
And we just put something, we can, I could even separate that bullet a little and put something that the se- select board decided to add.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fun. I think, yeah, I think that's fun.
I like that where, because it says Enfield will be a town that.
Right.
Doesn't left for. Something, something. I like it.
Okay, so those are the two things I wanted to make sure we talked about. Are there other edits that folks would like to discuss or are they good as a change?
I didn't make a a lot of edits because I really only have one small one. Um, under the public safety section, strategic initiative, page number one, page. Eight, nine, ten. There's no number on it, but if you went back to page eight, you could follow it to ten. Uh, pub- a strategic initiative number one. And the line says, this will include full-time staffing or strategic partnerships with surrounding communities. I don't like the word will. I prefer the word may.
Yeah.
I wa- will and shall are committing, so we're either committing or probably shouldn't be in our document.
I'm taking the five of us, if you will, out of the picture, and it's five years from now. And someone reads this and says, will.
Came from, this came from. Our our retreat day.
Yes, and I wasn't on, I didn't craft that particular sentence, so.
Remember, that's the one thing that he was pushing for, that we don't have a, we're Mike gonna do this or maybe gonna do this. It's we are or we're not.
So I think we need to say will because if you don't want to do that item, then you take it out of the plan. Right, because you have, your words, we just finished leaving in the paragraph saying that we could modify the plan, so everybody knows that. So if we're gonna modify the plan, then go ahead and do it later. But we made a commitment to doing that activity as this board, and in the future. We don't have to. If they want to make a change to the strategic plan, then go through and do it.
And you have to make sure you lump a whole sentence together.
No, I've read it, uh, I've read it twenty seven times, trust me. And I still see it as a directive, not as a planning option. And so I still disagree with the word will. But I don't know how you feel.
They're supposed to be directives. They're not supposed to be upped.
By the way, it's repeated under the police section later on, so using the exact same verbiage. Up to you.
What does the board want to do?
I'm very well.
I'll stay with well.
Yeah, I think the 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 real challenge is where is um. Around the staffing piece.
Well, okay, then I, then I do have a question.
Yeah, and but it's the large, no, it's it's it, it is the, using the entire. Things, I think if we were to say right now, the strategic partnerships since the. Uh, avenue to pursue. But we are, we are moving forward with the um, public safety.
Maybe.
Committee, which is going to make recommendations around this. Um, and that's already.
I see it as gonna be one of those two things.
I I agree with that. I agree with that. I was simply trying to identify. Um, an option as opposed to a directive. In other words, it's this or that, not.
The or is is giving that option.
Yeah, it's either this or that in that sense.
I think it's, I think it's fine because we we are, we're executing that through that committee. We are doing it. And they're gonna make a recommendation, and having it in the plan does not require us to. Accept the recommendation, whatever it is, that gets analyzed on its own after the fact, after it's been made. But we are actually moving forward with learning about which of those options might be best for Enfield.
Oh, then I'll take your word. I'm agnostic.
Okay. Other uh.
I just have like a general one that's a great one, and I, so I played around with it and I couldn't make it so that my brain could. It's in the beginning, in the executive summary where it says public safety, and then it says strategic initiative number one, strategic initiative number two, and then you go to the next section, like one and two. I was just, I kind of played around, like, I didn't think, like. Could it be a chart? It just is a little bit like. Because later on, I think when we did the slides, you called it like PS one. Um, which made sense, a lot of sense to me for that relationship with the slides, but I was wondering about. Being, if we repeat them later and how it's correlating. I I I honestly don't have a good solution because I played with it on my computer. I'm just tossing that out as uh, something that my brain was like, oh, strategic condition one, and I was like, wait, was that one? And I'm like, oh, no, no, you're in public safety. So um. And I get why, and I get that it's kind of an outline. I just, I just, I have a little struggle about the moment. And that's, you know, the executive summary is page three, and then later when, like, if you go to the beginning.
Can we just take the. From the memo and letters off of that?
Might be, because we don't use them again, do we? Or no, yeah, we do. Well, you could, but you don't need them necessarily, yeah. And do you call it public safety strategic initiative? I just, because it's like, oh, God.
The 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 other option is to just actually have the strategic initiatives. Not reset, just increment them one through sixteen or whatever it is.
I just did a little flipping back and forth as I was doing it, but I, and I did it on my laptop, but I, my brain was.
I think I think the easy thing is to go one through sixteen instead of one through three and then one through three again and then one.
That's not a bad way to go. I think that's a decent suggestion.
I'm sorry, you guys, I just.
I don't know, it'll clarify exactly what people are talking about. And it should be an easy change.
That that's not bad. I I I did have one comment, John made the comment, should we analyze why and which crosswalk? Would be enhanced with reference to make all crosswalks enhanced crosswalks.
Was that one of ours?
It's one of John's comments.
No, but did we ever say we wanted enhanced crosswalks? I just want them to paint the darn things.
That would be considered an enhancement.
Yeah.
No, because I think an enhanced crosswalk is a technical term, right?
It's a specific design feature. It's ramped with the pebble stepping.
I know I'm supposed to want them, but. Can't even get.
Well, the ramp part is, that's the law.
Well, that's ADA, but, yeah, but you, but but the 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 pebble implant that they use. For the ones, for the ones that are enhanced.
They're supposed to have it.
So so what is an?
So what what is the differentiation that?
I think we're.
The lights, I see. Then his comment is appropriate. We should analyze which and uh. Why and which get enhanced.
I mean, the state's trying to make us have no crosswalks, so that's fun.
Well, they won't pay for their own.
No, they literally don't want us to have a bunch of our crosswalks.
That could be an important point with regard to the planning board looking eventually at Maple Street.
We can have, I'm not gonna say it because I was.
So we can edit that to just be um.
John's comment perhaps, or words.
Uh, yeah.
Just roll in his.
We can just say analyze crosswalks.
Analyze crosswalks for a need and uh.
Where's that one at?
There's no page numbers, you know, yeah, that. So we could write it that uh. Such crosswalks will be analyzed and uh, if they're to be enhanced.
This is just a lower piece, I think.
Are we ready to approve it as edited tonight? I think that was the only other thing we saw that.
Was there? Sure. It says it will be reviewed annually. Do we need to say by whom?
Well, it's in.
I don't think so. I mean, the theory is that it would roll back here.
I think you're the one signing it, so I hope we can tell it's ours.
Okay. I move that with those modifications edits, which are quite good. We accept the two thousand twenty four strategic plan.
Seconds.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? The plan is approved as edited. So you can go ahead and make those edits and then we'll come in and sign it. Once it's.
I assume you'd be.
A couple of them I might send to you guys.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. You're gonna post it um, on the town website? Yeah.
It's gonna have those flashing lights, okay? So that's gonna be in two years from now, three weeks. He's very misery together.
And so we can go to the last item, the Shed Street RFP review.
It's only been like twenty years.
Hey, we're we're step by step, Dad. And there's a lot of the comments from the uh, one up on Methodist Hill have already been worked into this one. Um, are there, is there any comments from the board?
No, I think putting in the um, zoning district excerpt. It is a, is a good thing. It it's not restrictive. It leads a path. And besides, whoever comes up with a proposal, if we happen to like it, they can go to the zoning board anyway. There's nothing that says can't go to the zoning board.
No, we just tried to put it in there for the, had an idea.
Yeah, exactly. They have an idea, and I think that's a good choice.
It's good, because those are the rules they should be working with.
That's the basic, right. They're not gonna propose a nuclear power plant.
Helen, I think it's good, especially in this case, because they're a lot less restricted than everything else around them. So if they weren't real adept at reading our zoning bylaw, I was pointing out that there's more danger to be allowed here than anywhere else.
And I get really crazy and wild and which one I'm younger than I am and ask for a QR code. The reason, like, whenever you have a really, really long URL, it's like. It's kind of wonky, right? I mean, I know you can type it out very carefully, but you could leave the URL and just make it so someone can snap it. Even if they're just forwarding it to their own email, I don't know if that's doable. I mean, the QR code thing is pretty, but just.
Is it an active link in the document?
It's an active link.
Yeah, they're probably gonna get digital copy.
Okay, as long as it's active, I'm good.
What are you thinking, thirty days or longer?
I would leave it open for thirty days. We do have the requirement to send this to. Planning Board Conservation Commission and then. We can try to do that at the same time. Gomia kind of sends the message to the other boards that we already made up our mind.
I'm not trying to be a jerk, but. They can give us feedback, but they can't stop the process.
No. We we have to allow them to make their recommendations and opinions known.
But but process wise, it's a good idea to give them that opportunity.
I, but I don't think we need to hold anything up for that. They'll each be meeting this month anyway. And so they'll have the opportunity to express their opinions uh, before anything's even received.
Yeah. I think too, if for some reason we learn something new and earth shattering, we can be like, hey, process over.
The other thing is. The real question that's being asked is, do you want to sell it or not? That's the question. It's not, what are you gonna put there? It's, do you want to sell it or not? End of story. That's the only thing they come in on. Conservation does because they want to conserve the property. There's nothing concerned there. And planning comes in and says, meets the regulations. Yeah, I don't care, sell it.
Do we need a motion to the effect that we intend to sell?
You don't need a motion for that. If you want to put the RFP out, I think you're giving a motion.
Okay.
And then.
I mean, that's my interpretation as well.
And then it's, do we?
Okay.
Do we wanna send it out at the same time? We need the RFP, do we want to give them time to come back before we send it out?
I might be the only one who wants to give them time, but I'll say I want to give them time just because I think that that's a recurring theme in the town's people.
Well, I think it's also the process that we should set moving forward, not talking Shed Street particularly, but how do we want to run these moving forward? And we'll just keep the same.
But I want to take advantage of um, a developer who's interested in, this is a prime time. I don't want to lose an entire month.
Well, who knows how long it'll be before we can even sell this because.
I I actually think we can have the answer before our next.
Right, meeting.
So and so at our next meeting, we could release it on the fifteenth.
Well, I think we can release it on the first and ask for a return on May first. And we have, we're outside the boundaries of those two meetings.
I think we should give them fair opportunity to give us feedback before we release it. Because that's the process that we should be following, process wise, and both of them have meetings before our next meeting. And so it should not be too hard to get that feedback.
I was gonna.
Certainly, I I mean, I can't speak for the planning board, but I'm pretty sure the planning board will be able to put it on their agenda next week, discuss it and provide feedback.
I, I don't know. I kind of like the idea of it running in parallel because I don't think it's gonna change it.
I I see no issue with simply making the return of proposal date. Following the response of the planning board and the conservation commission. We'll have ample opportunity to know their opinions before we even begin to review any proposal.
The next fifteen days, the clerical fifteen days of that.
I mean, we've been dragging this out twenty years. I guess I'm kind of over it. It's my biggest problem.
Exactly. I I have to agree with Kate on this.
I think everybody knows.
I'd like to see May one as the date of receipt.
And I'm sorry, it's not, my frustration isn't with you guys by any means. It's just, it's been such a ridiculous process from soup to nuts that I'm like. Can we just sell this thing so we never have to talk about it again?
Thank you.
But I think I've raised a good point that the process isn't about this one in particular. This is the one that's frustrating you.
No, I I understand that, but also what, so this is like, we just had a planning board hearing. like, we just had a planning board hearing on a project that was already started. So we're going to start doing this process now and are we going to enforce it? Or are we going to penalize? Or are we going to say to everybody else, hey, that was done wrong? I'm just throwing that out there too.
I think, particularly because he's not here, we can say that we seem to be divided too, too.
No, it fails. Obviously, it fails.
No, 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 no. I just, I just, I just wanted, you know, to move us forward tonight. So we can, so I'm happy to entertain any motions people want to make. That's perfectly fair. Or I'm going to propose that we send the question to the other two boards. And they should understand that they need to respond because we will make a decision at our next meeting. So they can't put it off.
I'll make a motion that we send this to conservation and to planning and they need to have a response to us before April fifteenth.
A wholeheartedly second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would still like to see it released and use a May one return date.
Same thing.
Right, so do you agree with the May one return date?
I I do, but it's, it's, I mean, if any motion, we're going to tie fail.
We'll talk about next. So pour the motion on the table. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so so we do have a path forward for the next two.
I will say on this one, it's going to be sixes because we're not going to be able to sell it with DES blowing us down.
Oh, no question.
It's going to be time soon.
But I'd like to get the proposals in and take the next actual step as opposed to a lesser step.
I just want to throw the party that this thing is done.
They're not our ties. They're on our land.
Okay, they belong to the state. There are rail ties on the trail and still in many parts of that trail.
I know.
Okay. Moving on, administrative items are none tonight, so other business, are there public comments?
Yes. Very hot, just block Haven Road. It's April first. I'll try to keep my comments short. It's hard to believe, but oh, four years ago, I attended a M-FAC planning meeting. And I made the request to the plate, to the board that they make the commitment to make the public safety building all electric with no fossil fuels. As as you can imagine, the reaction I received was akin to passing gas in church. And fast forward four, four years and, you know, you know where we are and, you know, the ship has sailed, the Titanic's on its way. With that said, I'd like to point out the Green Energy Times that Joelle and Courtney Buster Butt delivering Enfield and the rest of the Upper Valley on her own time. But I think I can call your attention to this great article here about the Meriden Library they just finished. And in twenty eighteen, they made the commitment to go all electric. So this library is all electric. They went with triple pane windows, triple pane doors, and it's all on heat pumps and they're fine. And they brought it in under budget. What I would like the board to do is, can we make the commitment going forward? We will commit to all electric. This is that they went with the ready for one hundred, which is one hundred percent electric. And I'd like the board to make the commitment to do that. See, this is a public safety building, the public, the last project that anybody in this room will see passed in the next twenty five years.
No, it won't.
Well, so let's make the commitment. It's really easy.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate you staying on this. It's a very important issue. The other thing that that is being balanced is the budget concerns and constraints.
Well, we screwed ourselves on that by lying to the community when we brought the initial proposal on, leaving out important items. And then getting the the price low enough so that the voters would pass it. And then we passed it off to Ed and said, hey, figure out how to do this. And he's been scrambling ever since.
And I appreciate the feedback. I I think, I can't speak for everyone, but I think what the board is committed to is building the very best public safety building that we can within the budget constraints that we have.
And the last thing I'd like to mention and like an after action report is, again, this is my opinion and everybody has one. The way we go about these massive projects is not working. We did the DPW. We know how that turned out. We're a DPW two point O now with with the, with the new building. It doesn't work. I think we need to reach out to communities that have had successes. And I keep mentioning the people of Kentucky where they built these net zero high schools for the past eight or ten years. Somehow they figured it out. There's a public safety building in Canada, same way, net zero public safety building. Cost and was was paramount, but somehow they figured it out. We went into this project, we had no goalposts. And we, you know, you came up, you, you guys did a great job figuring out what size building you needed and the need was there obviously. And what happened? As soon as Ed gets it, because of price, we had chopped four thousand square feet off. That was the beginning. And then we just.
You're, you're twisting history. I can't agree with it. You've used the word deception. I don't appreciate that. It is not fair. It is not honest.
Then what?
Your laborious language to make your emphasis is inappropriate when you're criticizing a group who has worked so hard and with such diligence to come up with a project that is both economically viable and satisfactory to the need. To lay it on any individual is extremely inappropriate in this case, and I will not accept that attitude from you.
Process is wrong. We didn't go into this saying, hey, we're going to build this net zero. We're going to build this with these, these items, they're cast in concrete, we're not changing them.
Thank you, Gary. This, I'm going to focus on the public comment part of this. We don't necessarily need to have a lot of rehashing of the old thing, but they say you come in and providing your comment. David?
I would like to echo that, particularly when it comes back at the public from leaders of our community. I know you're in a hot seat. Please realize that and the way you deal with it, even for difficult and repetitive concerns. You hear some from me probably, may feel the same way from me, but that's not the way to deal with public. Thank you.
Thank you. Good idea.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but we had a housing people here tonight. And they say we need more housing and there's no municipal land for housing. Except the hundred acres on Methodist Hill that we've decided we're going to put as minimal amount of housing as we can on. And I'm wondering if we need to think about that for a minute. You know, I keep saying the townhouse model. Boy, I could see a townhouse model up there of four four townhouse buildings up there, sixteen new sellable units, not rentable units that could add to the housing stock. And I I understand we had a committee that came in and they wanted to originally save seventy five more acres of concerned property. And I just keep, I was, I didn't even think about it till tonight was we're doing as little as possible. We have all these nice, you know, new regulations we're trying to do. But we as a town have a hundred acres of developable property that we could be putting housing on. And what's the big cost we were saying is the cost of land is what's causing the problem. Well, we own the land. And should we be thinking about housing up there?
I mean, I think that for me, I've always wanted to sell, but I listened to, I I mean, like sell it wholesale and see what comes in on the RFP. I know we gave some guardrails in the RFP, but none of them are bounds that are you shall. They're all a pretty open. I'm hoping someone will come in with something because, you know, I I understand very much the neighbors across the street are very opposed. I I respect their feelings. But they live in a housing development. And so I'm very open to the idea that we could get a proposal like that and I've been hoping that we would get housing there. I mean, it's an ideal spot. It's a beautiful place.
Okay.
All right, mine is on Depot Street, actually, the.
No, I said it out loud, sorry.
There's a sign there, which is nice, saying parking as you come down Shaggy Road. But then when you get, go, go down Depot Street, it doesn't actually say where the public can park, for one.
No.
No. And ideally, to me, would be on the far sides of the ambulance building, at least currently. Because that way you're not parking when the guys go for the ambulance.
Do people really not park on the pavement? That's so obvious.
They know where to park.
I was going to say, I mean, I park there all the time, but I see people pull in and park all the time, like.
Well, I'm just, just saying it would be nice saying for the general public to use the rail, you know, park here.
It's not hitched down, it's yours. It's not hitched down, it's theirs.
And then I was also poking around on the rail trail websites and they have a map of the whole rail trail that goes from Leving all the way down to Danbury, something like that, the northern rail trail section.
Actually, all the way to.
Well, the northern rail trail section. And then on their website map, they show places where public can park. And so it would be really nice if it was labeled on the Enfield, on that. If you're going to have that as a rail trail parking amongst other public parking, it'd be nice to have a little sign and that the rail trail could post it on their website that this is a place where you can park in Enfield to use the rail trail.
You can ask him again.
I'll ask him again.
I was just going to say, David, could you take that to their board? Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I know local people, most of them look, they just put on the shaking, the uh, show, that's from the lake park. Even though the sign says go back here for rail trail, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, but.
Some people on Depot Street were.
People park there, believe me.
I don't, don't want people parking. I have several contacts.
Too many people are parking.
It's being viewed. The park is being viewed.
You know what's way better than parking there? Why don't you bike there?
All right, other, there's public comments? Well, we, we have other business. Is there any other business?
I have no other business.
I was trying to sneak out.
Then I would entertain a motion to.
I'm aware adjourned.
Taking you on, Jim.
I, John's gone. I had to make John's job.
They made a motion to adjourn. Do you second Tracy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you guys.